Call this meeting to order, the Village Council Budget Workshop Meeting for Tuesday, May 1st. Please rise from your seats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You have a roll call?
Bailey. Frost.
Here.
Thomas.
Yep.
Okay.
Do you want to do a quick agenda?
There's a motion with support to approve the agenda in favor, opposed, or the public seeing none. Moving on to business, 2019-2020 budget discussion.
Basically, the last time we met, Joe had asked something about the police lines and there was some increases there. And later on that day, I went back and said what's mine. And that was because I had one officer plugged in for full-time and part-time. So that was the largest change there. I backed them out of the ones that dropped like 40 million out of it. Because remember, we were like, what, 136? And that 9/11, which is our fund balance contribution amount, that dropped down about 98. So, and part of the discussion that day was, I did put the full $200,000 in here for the downtown project because limited time that this budget was covered, you know, April, May, June, so it's paid next year, so we're really covering the downtown project. So I figured I'd put 100 grand of that here and another 100 grand would go to the next one.
And then 100 grand is in this now?
Yes.
Okay.
And it is by that 204 fund, it is. That's how, we talked about the Village Capital Food Fund, let's call it. Or is it the 407 fund? There was, it had a $55,000 fund balance, and 45. Yeah, page 21, the Village Capital Project Fund, there's one, that's how we're doing the downtown. There was $55,000 fund balance and change. We take 5,000 from the general fund, add it to that, 100,000. That is what's on the side of the downtown.
Okay.
Right there. So that, zero out that Capital Project Fund and then help pay for that.
One of the most recent revenue and expenditure reports that you included, and you and I talked about this, I think, there were many lines that were over budget. Do you have any concerns there for the current budget? You know, and you had mentioned that, you know, because of the way we have it set up with the cost centers, that it's not a huge deal that we're over on some and less on others, is that right?
Right, because of line by line, it doesn't present a problem. It's the overall bottom cost center number, that's all that really matters.
Okay.
So, if you have 200 grand set for this project or cost center, and you're below your 200 grand, your fine doesn't matter what the lines are per se.
Okay.
Some of them should track, some of the problems with that is when I redid it last year and put it in place, I had various breakdowns of where someone's costs might go. And sometimes when they first started to do bills, it was not new to them, and they weren't being broken down in an exact way.
I see.
So they might hit in the area.
Where they maybe shouldn't.
Piled all at once as a split out.
I see, okay.
So overall, the cost is the same, but it's just not splintered, so to speak, the way or spread out the way I had the original plan. So, we got, we straightened out a lot of that, but going back and trying to fix every little transaction for eight months, just to make a little right and match. It's kind of watering the brid, I think, it's kind of too much time to go back and fix every little line. But overall costs are, personally, they're the only difference. Some of the things we talked about, like later on, this building is over because during the winter time, they were diverted from roads to here. So that'll be, there'll be a couple amendments for that reason.
Okay. So we anticipate some amendments probably at the next regular meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
The year-to-date, that's really to April 28th?
It wasn't that time, yes. I haven't gone back and updated those numbers come then.
Are we really saving that much of our street lighting?
What lighting then?
448. 26,000, we had budgeted 48, last year was 36.
Well, so, we had a couple more bills coming in there, so, yeah, they won't be up to 48 for sure, the rate is going.
It wouldn't be up to probably 36.
Right.
Which is what last year was.
Right. I don't know when.
Last year was 36.
The street lights were all converted to LED, what, two or three years ago now?
Right. That's dope, that's a nice saving.
Yeah, it's over 11,000 here, thanks for saying this.
It's bright in my front yard, but I light it.
Well, you know, but when they put the new streetlights in, they're not putting as many poles in.
Right.
So it'll be nice.
Of course, yeah.
We'll lose that airlight. The airport runway effect.
As a matter of fact, lady, she was one of the ladies here last night, too, I think it was, had mentioned there's a street light, or that's gone now, it enters on Verde Woods Court, I think it is. She said the light pole was removed or went out and it's gone or something. She says, "There's the entrance, it's not there now," and she wanted us to look and see that. I think she said, "It enters Verde Woods Court." We'll have to look for the entrance light, typically there's a light over the entrance. I don't think they'll probably remove it or anything. Yeah, I was nowhere near it, I looked there and looked at it for real, too.
On line 32, the downtown maintenance, it's budgeted for 49, 735, but isn't there a transfer from the DDA for 50 for downtown maintenance?
Yes.
So shouldn't this be 50?
Let me see, that's the expenditure, so, let me see, expenditure means it's 443. So, that's our page 10. This is just our expenditures, well, because some of, where all of that downtown maintenance go to, that 50 grand they give us.
Well, the expenditure is going to be in the DDA budget.
Yes, but like Joe said, if they're giving us 50 grand to spend down there, why aren't we spending 50?
Right, I mean, it's just basically, I mean, it's just shy of 50, but.
Yeah.
And I know some years.
Well, some of that might go to, like, your parking lot and stuff, too.
Oh, I see.
Let's see what the DDA exactly broke down.
Yeah, because some of that's, that makes sense.
So, the DDA gives 50 grand to us, the DDA for the work they do down in the park, keeping track of the park.
And that's going to be in line nine, the revenue portion.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
When do we approve DDA's budget?
Same as this.
Yep, it's in here. I'm not sure.
So they give 50 grand to us for the DBW, 25, I heard 24 or something, for the police coverage. So about 75 grand from the DDA transferred to the village for work of the DDA district.
Okay, I gotta, Glenn did a presentation in our meetings, right? And that was basically the overview of the budget?
Yeah, yeah.
He ordered the meeting.
Did you do the meeting last night?
No, when Joe, when Glenn presented the DDA budget to us, that was the meeting you were in, and you would ask to see it.
That was the meeting, that was the meeting that I was at. It was not that.
Ron Joe wasn't there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no.
But yeah, so that, to answer your question about that, it would all.
It would all necessarily like that.
Yeah. The DDA guys are, their tag there looks like a spreadsheet. It is a large spreadsheet. One of the things we talked about, for instance, okay, let's put the page 11, that's where the parks is. Back in January, we came and had a guy appear talking about the weed control around the lake. That, all that night was just a request to allow them to do it. It was a financial request. We allowed them to treat the lake, whether we were taking our own or not. If you recall, last year, we contributed a thousand, I believe, 3,000 or 4,000 to do that lake. And I've had that thousand plug in here on that line, whatever line that is there, I painted on line 407 in the parks. So, I got a call this week, "So are you guys, you know, good at doing that as well? It's in our budget. And if the project's approved, yes, then we'll be contributing a thousand dollars again this year to that cost of the lake." I just want to make sure that's been there, it's been noted, same as last year. I assume it was still okay with the base on the feedback of that meeting in January, that it was if they were here.
We'll still have to come back to council to approve the expenditure, even though it's in the budget. Just because it's in the budget doesn't mean we're going to be a thousand dollars.
Why doesn't it? Doesn't it make sense?
Okay, we budgeted a thousand, now you have to come to council and ask us to spend it there.
Why do we budget?
So that we have enough money in case you want a new tie.
So if I have a thousand dollars of weeds in the budget, and they say, "Can we do the weeds?" I would say, "Yes, it's in the budget, go ahead and do it."
But didn't we set a, like a...
Oh, you're talking about purchases.
Well, didn't we set something for contracted services that the manager has so much?
Yes.
What was that?
It was 5,000, it was the, there was a certain number of 5,000 that he had to bid.
Oh, I see.
The manager can spend his 500 without coming to council?
I haven't seen that part, so I don't know. Got someone in the charter?
It's by resolution of the council. Different managers have got different amounts depending on how well they have the credit cards. I think it's always come back to council to approve the expenditures, and we got to approve the check.
Right, well, this was, and I told you guys, this would, I said, this would be in our budget going into effect July 1, so we would build a pay from July 1, even if they might do it in, I don't think, and maybe for June. These are those kind of things that we talk about, and it's in the budget, and if we approve it, put it in the budget, it just makes sense that when that's time to do that, we just do it.
What's the 6,600 for an intern? Where's that from?
For what? What page is that?
Page 19. I'll say 729810.
That's DDA.
How good is DDA, sorry?
Say what? I don't remember anything about an intern.
You can ask them.
What? That's DDA. And that was part of our talk yesterday, too.
Yeah, how did that go?
Really well, really well. So, the Communications Committee met for the first time yesterday, and we had full attendance, and we discussed different options regarding internal, external communications plans for council, DDA, all the departments. And then also, of course, doing something, not just with the MDOT project upcoming, that being the big focus, right, on the need for an increase in communications with the public, but also just to really kind of build a concrete, three-to-five-year communications and marketing plan for the Village of Oxford. So, that being said, we discussed various options, and we really moved to the consensus that what's really truly needed is to bring somebody on. And so we discussed the option of matching what DDA had budgeted at 60 or 6,000, and that's just for this current fiscal year. And then I believe he said he had additional funds as of after July 1. And so, as council, if council, you know, approves the budget with the amendment that we match what DDA can contribute towards bringing somebody on part-time, we'd like to create a part-time position to actually do all the maintenance of the social media, to do all the internal communications between the departments regarding upcoming events, regarding any kind of informational calls to the public regarding meetings, town halls, or any updates on MDOT that are going to be updated on the DDA site, regarding any kind of route changes, construction updates, communications like that that are imperative, especially for magic with that, really, I think there is somebody coming on board. I know that, I don't think Joe would complain having an extra hand in the office, especially when it comes to the website. As we've, you know, as times are changing, that's how people are getting their access or their information, is that access to the website and to having different or various social media threads that I believe it's imperative that we are the ones that are putting that information out there. As we have seen in the past, if information is being put out in the public, there's been a lot of confusion, or, you know, people, rumors start, and I don't want things getting all convoluted online. I'd rather just have a place that they can always refer back to getting, you know, information that's updated, updated being the keyword, which I think just honestly, it's just, we don't, no one else right now currently has the time to dedicate to that. So I think that in, you know, the final, the final, I guess, inclusion of that meeting, and I guess our next step, we're really just looking to see where in the budget we can, you know, match DDA's funds, bring that person on, hopefully do it as quickly as possible. We did consider doing an intern in lieu of like a part-time position, and, you know, we looked at the possibilities, because it could be lower wages, but in reality, the difference between, you know, a $15 intern and an $18 part-time position is, you know, I think worth volumes as far as getting the quality of candidate, right? Just that dollar difference when you post a position. And also with an intern, there's those sustainability there, you know, you're going to get somebody in here for three months throughout the summer, and that might get us like a little bump to get going, but then there's going to be that leg of time, and we're really looking for consistency here. So, you know, I hate to start a really great new initiative and see it do really well, and then have a drop off, and have to try and panic and find somebody to fill that again. So, I think that, you know, if we're going to do the hiring process for an intern, we might as well just look at doing the hiring process for somebody who would like to stay, and we can, you know, make the efforts to retain that talent.
Did the committee talk about, you know, how many hours this part-time position could be?
We discussed between 25 and 32, understanding that the offices are only open 36, so I think after 32, I believe they're legally obligated to provide benefits. Is that right?
Yeah, there was so many brothers up in the city, but I'm not sure, because I know currently, we run through police personnel at 40 hours a week, and don't provide them any benefits. The law, I don't know if we get this threshold of law because of our size, there's a certain amount of numbers of people that once you get that, then some of those things, you can't like 50 employees, you have to provide those. So, I don't think we'd be pushing up against that or going over with those hours as far as benefits go. I mean, we have a fair look and do that benefit-wise with any part-time position. So I don't think we have to worry about that, that's my point.
If they're budgeting 6,600, that's, that's not.
Right.
Yeah, it's not, they'd have to come up.
Yeah.
Because I'm just doing real quick math, you know, 18 bucks an hour, I don't know what the going rate is for this kind of person, you know, for a year, it's about 26,000.
And how many hours?
That's at 120 hours a month, so 30 hours a week. And, you know, did Glenn indicate that he had, I mean, obviously they budgeted the 6,600 for this type of thing? And the way I look at it is this sort of refills that true position?
And he was working for us some, and Glenn went there.
And I mean, his title, and I'm not really even sure where he got that title, was like assistant creative.
He gave it to him that much.
Yeah, smart kid.
And it changed weekly.
You know, I mean, obviously, and we're not going to do that at this meeting, we're not going to approve that hire at this meeting, but we can discuss and put it in the budget. What am I going with this? But we need to define, you know, what that title is, you know, scope of work, you know, get a job description and all that. This budget has the full-time officer that chief passed on?
Yes.
Okay.
With the benefits kind of in the middle of the road, like we talked about before, we don't know, could those benefits go up if it's a family, or could they be lower because it was a single? We don't know.
And there's not, there's not a staff increase with the DDA or DPW yet?
No.
And that's something you need to mention, right? Can we do that next year?
Yes. And while we're on that subject, Tom McNeese is running yesterday for next surgery.
Ooh, when's the surgery?
Yes, that's right.
Oh, yeah, already headed?
Started yesterday, so we haven't heard much, I think now, I'm thinking one person can apply for an application, pick up an application for your summer help.
Yeah, I'm interviewing one, one person now. I'm interviewing one person tomorrow for DPW, he's retired.
And so that's not going swimmingly, and then Tom's out, so they're going to be shorthanded, even if they pick up the summer help, Tom's looking, maybe, you know, one to three months or something.
Could we advertise that, are you looking for like a, you know, younger person looking manual labor?
That's right.
Can we get, I know we're getting off track a little bit from that, but since we're talking.
We need to put it on the paper, but only one time.
Should we float it over to the schools and see if there's any, you know?
We can talk about that a different time. It's, yeah, you know, usually college students.
Right.
Fit the.
Right, deserve your for the summer.
Mature level, they're operating the tractor vehicles, and, you know.
We put it on our site, too, we had about 2,000 hits on it, so, you know, you can, the way they say, you can leave the force of the water.
Does the merit a little bit of an increase?
We did, we did put a.
We did.
To 12, I'm saying even more than 1250.
Well, that's.
You watch out for that, you guys are going to start beating them.
Yeah, you're working the balance for 13.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like, even like 1350 or 14 dollars, maybe it could get you a couple more, you know, five candidates from the door.
The problem is, you're now, you're, you know, we started advertising this back in...
Right, we already.
April, yeah, April. You know, we're already, college students are already out of college and.
Locked in the summer.
Most are high school students, I mean, everybody's, and unemployment rates, the lowest it's been 50 years, so people are working.
That would be my worry for the communications person, too, is just be able to find, finding that talent.
We wanted to require that they have two years of either experience working directly either with the local government or municipality when it comes to any kind of public relations or marketing, and/or be in a degree program for communications. I think that's, you know, with, obviously, experience with web data and building sites and things like that, is that it'd definitely be a bonus, because that's, you know, adding things to websites and getting links up and stuff like that, it's going to be pretty imperative. I think that's, like I said, I haven't taken a communications class in a long time, but I think that's pretty basic, like, there's probably, you know, most of the court curriculum and everything like that now, so.
I don't think you do nowadays, web-based.
Right. So I think that catching somebody halfway through a program like that, or that has still just that one to two years' experience is $18, seems like it's going to capture a quality candidate, you know, and still kind of get somebody with a pretty good level of experience, so we're not starting fresh. Because one of the suggestions was that, you know, we tap into some of the statehood parents that are looking for alternative work, you know, updating social media, things like that, which I really encourage the idea of, again, because I'm looking for a level of professionalism, not just to keep up with posting on social media, but to really come in here, be personal with the departments, work very closely with DDA and the local businesses, really be that personal, you know, face-to-face piece when needed, but then also be the social media piece and be knowledgeable enough to make updates to the, you know, the website and things like that. So this is, there's a lot of things that go to it, right? And so, yeah, so it's a little bit more than just, you know, talking with people online. Maybe we get to that some order, like, that's an option, but right now, this is a huge step just to get somebody in, and so that's, that's what we, that, you know, that group was pretty, yes, in consensus that that's the best option at this point.
So DDA has budgeted 6,600 for this type of position?
They weren't thinking about bringing this up until January, I think.
Which.
That's why they, I think that dog reflected their time very.
I see.
They were, as the project really ramped up and got ready to go, was when they were talking about writing them on. They were talking about trash pushing in there in that, all right?
Yeah, that makes sense. That way, that, I mean, this is all the prep time and, I mean, building the foundation of all that communication platform.
Right, you know, just turn the switch on, that would be there, right?
Right. So I guess, even with that 6,600 for the DDA.
Which we can roll over from this year. It's based, that's available.
He had like 25 hundred left over this year.
Oh, I see, all right, so.
But he had, didn't he?
9,000.
He had a little bit, he was a little bit in this year, this year.
So we still need to come up with.
So I wish I had DDA budget.
16,800.
I have a copy right now.
Well, it's, it's there in here.
Any points of 296?
Yeah.
Is DDA?
Is it properly lined, like the line?
Yeah.
Because.
What pages are you on?
There were a couple things the last time I checked. It was in the.
19 on the intern organization.
DDA offering 296?
Yeah.
Is that, okay, all right, so, no, no, it doesn't tell me anything.
That's in that page, break down.
Yep, okay.
So we're about halfway down the line, 688 or so is where the intern is.
Okay, so basically, the way I understood is, he had like 6,600 available now, and then has a rollover for next fiscal year, January or July 1, he was going, he had additional money supply.
I'm not sure, I think there's some wiggle room in there, I'm not sure exactly where it's at.
Bottom line, if he makes that contribution, we're able to pull something out of our general to match it, I think that we're in a good place.
And he still needs to have budget in there because he's, he's working with Main Street or the county on the, bringing in that consultant to brand, you know?
That was another thing we talked about really briefly, because he did say that he had budgeted some monies to do, you know, the contracted work, and we kind of, we're like, you know, why don't we get somebody that can, that can do that as well? Because I understand.
But this person, this is, so as a Main Street community, we get a tech visit from the county, and that tech visit contributes up to 6,500 for something like that. So that's, if we.
It has to be a contracted person or it can't be a staff?
It's got to be, it's a staff, it's a tech visit, so it's a, it's a service that the county's providing, they pay 6,500, they pay 6,500 for. So, from my understanding, Glenn had budgeted a little over that, because it may cost 10 or whatever it is, but the county's going to pick up that 6,500. That's, that's the brand, the, do the graphics, do a design around that construction, timelines, whole, whole nine yards.
Right, but the whole thing is, like, we, they did that competition with the schools to do the logo and decide, so he showed us the winner of that, I bet he announced that or whatever.
And this guy's supposed to be incorporating some of that into that.
So, well, but if we brought this person on, especially if they have, you know, any kind of like designer, whatever, knowledge, we could give them that logo, and basically say, you know, anything related to the MDOT project, like, this logo goes on it. You know, Chief kind of gave some really cool references to some other communities that, you know, when they're, I think it was Chief, like, we were talking about, like, you know, everything that gets put on, anything.
He talked about it, too, yeah.
I think it was, yeah, or P, something, so it's like, you know, all the signs in the windows that anything regarding like "skews our dust," you know, during the construction project, it's got that like emerald on there, right?
And that's what this guy's worth, going to be working on?
I don't understand why, if we have a competent, you know, marketing and communications person working for us, like, why they couldn't take on that task? That's pretty feasible to me. I just, I understand, I don't know if there's some parameters to that.
Actually, there are, if we don't.
I just hate contract, we throw so much crap out.
No, but this is a service from the county that if we don't use it, we lose it.
I know, but if it's money coming in, why can't it?
It's not money coming in. That money will never come into us, it's all automatically paid out of.
So they get to sign with the contractor, like, at that point, it just sounds like MDOT's initiative through the local county.
No, it's not the.
Or MDOT, but on Main Street.
Yeah, so.
So Main Street can do whatever they want, or they can even take our ideas now?
Yeah.
Then they should be working with our person, I guess it just needs to interact, you know, obviously we can't use that money to fund.
But all of that's been in the works since January, before this Communications Committee came about to do the branding and the logo, and the leadership group kind of jumped the gun on that in terms of working with the school and the local contest. The local contest should not have happened when it happened.
See, unfortunately, and I don't want to get too, it's because we have a really limited amount of time, I want to stick to the budget, however, you know, it's like, hence why we needed this communications team, because, or committee, whatever you want to call it, but, you know, because I think one of the things we discussed and everybody, again, agreed with was that there was just all these committees, task force, and everyone knew what was going on. task force, and everyone knew what was going on. So Glenn started talking about things that had been done either through Main Street or through, you know, the task force or this leadership meeting. It's like no one really even, no one knew about it. So we have to kinda pretend like we're starting from scratch. You know, do we have to? No, we've got the framework of what, you know, we can do moving forward with what I have or what I'm starting to receive or see, but I didn't know anything about the Main Street project. So to me, I'm gonna task that, part of that job description is gonna be dealing with the MDOT project and building that branding and doing those things.
But I'm telling you, it's gonna be done through that, that tech visit.
Okay, well then we'll just take it off the job description. But I, sorry, so for me, I thought I was gonna be able to take that money and contribute to this.
There's, there is money in there, but the 6,500 from Oakland County, we will never see, we will never touch it. It will never come to our budget because Oakland, because we are a Main Street community, every year we get a tech visit. It's just a service that's provided where DDA and, um, Main Street work together to bring somebody in. Last year it was that quick, you know,
Surviving.
Surviving construction plan. Uh, year before that it was something else, year before that was something else. Um, so that's like something we get every year. And if, if we don't use it for that, we could use it for something else, but the DDA approved doing that two months ago. Which I completely agree with you. This is why we need better communication.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm just gonna pretend like you never say anything, so I can't use that money. But that being said, it sounds like valuable asset as far as helping us with branding and doing all that.
We'll get to figure it out with Glenn, what, because that's, that's one small piece of the money that he has. And then this, don't even think about the 6,500 with the county because that's already taken care of. So he was talking about going above and beyond that a little bit, maybe four or five or whatever it was. Um, that way you get even bigger bag for your budget or more out of this consultant.
Yeah, okay, I see what you're saying. So there was, okay. But if we have a competent person on staff, what I'm trying to say is my, for my case, is that you don't have to go above and beyond in that, you know, 6,500. We shouldn't have to pay additional amounts to consultants when we have somebody who's doing that in-house. And that can work with that person, you know, up to the amount and then we can use that extra. But I don't know what that wiggle room looks like and that's why I wanted Glenn to be here today, cause he wanted to be unfortunately, but.
Yeah, I mean, they've got, you know, 10,000 budgeted for, you know, parking signings. They've got, um, let's see here, there's a couple others.
The way you said.
Yeah, I'm not sure what we're talking about on that.
So the signings again for directing people to parking areas and stuff?
There's, there's 5,000 for materials, streetscape materials for businesses. So right there, there's, there's 15,000 and
Just 2,000 on budgeting, or I mean, advertising that, it's only, 70 dollars is spent.
Right.
I don't know when he, obviously
Some of that will
I don't know if he increased, but.
So I, I guess my point is, I don't, cause we are getting wins, but, um, there's some wiggle room in the DDA budget.
Yeah.
We still need to find, to bring on this person's communication position for 30 hours a week. You know, we still need to come up with like 17 grand hard.
Cause like I said, it'd be nice if they worked for Glenn, cause they have some money. That person could work so much a little bit for the DDA and a little bit for the, that's kind of the concept we were talking. Kinda like what Drew did at the end there. He was working here three days a week and he worked one day a week with the DDA. They put in like 10 grand by the last year, but he didn't use it all up. I think Glenn said he had like 2,500 left over. After he left, they didn't fill that void.
Right, right. We'd be sharing, but also this person acts as, as a liaison, right, for all these departments and even for the chamber or whatever, cause it's, we're all just one person. We can't go to every single meeting. And so I think it's, it would really be, you know, what great asset for all of us, not just for the communications piece, but also to have somebody kinda doing that internal communications and making sure, you know, there's not duplications of efforts, cause I've seen that happening in various committees, so.
At least the leadership thing is put on hold this summer and maybe that effort is gonna be pushed and converted as a task force now for June, July, August. And I think it's by the way, with the efforts of this project, they should stay there. Leadership was common. Me talking about greater Oxford leadership topics fine, but I think at that point they should leave the 2024 private hangover alone. Let the focus on the task force, that's the DDA task force to handle the DDA project.
Yeah. And also we, you know, obviously this, the MDOT project is gonna primarily fall under DDA. Like although yes, we're as council members, you know, we're a piece of that and this communications person is gonna be working very closely with that project because of the need, you know, um, really, really good communication with that. But, uh, it is gonna be continued to house on the DDA website because it's mostly through the DDA budget that are funding it. Um, and we've been working with it from day one to most. So, but that way also to streamline everything the best and the most efficient way. It's just having everything come to one area so everybody knows where they can locate that information. Um, so obviously we're gonna be revamping that, uh, site on DDA pages regarding everything MDOT with various links and information and updates, but it's, that's where it will all be kept and found.
One of the things they, uh, the, the former employee back wages for leveling and stuff, we paid a good chunk, but already half the money wages was spent and all of the DPD murders money, which was about 19 grand. So that part's already been paid out in all of the general fund. And then I'll fund that. We still, it doesn't seem fair to the general fund to absorb all that. So I moved some of this stuff out of the general fund into sewer water and roads. Because just like any other DDA employee or DPDW employee, they broke down some of this fund, some sewer funds, some water funds, some roads. So there's no more of that in the general fund in this budget. So for instance, there's like 30 grand into sewer and some into roads and some into water. So they are those accounts are sharing some of that cost as well, just like they would on a normal day-to-day basis for DPDW employee.
I hope percentages.
I'd have to look. Well, so of the, the 30 of the 120 is about 25% for sewer. Um, for about the same water, a little bit less in roads, like five grand went to roads. So out of about 120 grand, five grand went to the roads. So kinda we talked about a little bit one day to say, well, where does he work? What kind of things can we do? Um, like I said, one, one summer he was on the back turf, most of summer and doing a lot of sewer land and stuff. So based on that conversation, we just kinda broke, alright, what's left over, 400 grand is left over, where do we break it out? So some sewers, you know, I don't have the exact percentages, I just have to a dollar most right now. But it just seemed cannot be fair to charge the general fund for all of it.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. But so you'll see where at one time earlier on, we had a general fund under DPDW, under DPDW, it's gone now, but no. Cause we'll be paying that for our agreement we signed last year in July.
So we're budgeting in, on page 19, uh, number 661 and 666, I guess. They weren't, we haven't taken in any personal property or delinquency taxes on the DDA. Well, the DDA just doesn't get their delinquents, right?
Uh, I don't know. See, they, you know, they're changing away from personal property, going to that local stabilization thing. So you'll see some of it's in different, under our revenues in a different location.
I guess my concern with the revenue on the side is that in, you know, the audited amount in 17, 18 was, you know, 198. In 18, 19 it was budgeted 204. Year to date for 18, 19 is 192. I mean, that's actual.
Yes.
Cause they're not, there's no more coming in. It's, that time of year has already been passed. And so it, it's already out of sync with, we're over budgeting the revenue compared to the actions, you know. Similarly, in the village capture, the township operating, um, you know, both of those year to date, again, those year to dates are actual because all those funds have already come in. Um, and yet, you know, we've budgeted, you know, so I
And you forecast it out, it's hard to understand why it would be less than it was two years ago because our tax revenue's gone up. That's our, our
Right, right.
So.
But it is, yeah, the final audit, I mean, the year to date, the 17, 18 to 18, 19, the year to dates last, on that final audit. So I guess I'm cautious to, to say that
And I usually like to underplay our revenue.
Right, the 209 and the 179, so you kinda hide.
Yeah. See, and the, and the revenues for DDA, I like Glenn uses, when I figure it out, I'll do those.
Right.
Um, you know, the state has certain
But you have some sort of formula, right, of what the capture is based on the assessed value of the
There's a form that the state has put out for loss, personal property tax loss is a form like that. And we were looking at that last year or last week saying, alright, when are we getting that? Are we not getting it in the state yet? So personal property tax, as you know, is kinda going away. And basically with that local stabilization fund. So whether it's a DDA capture or not, it's still unclear.
And similarly, in the general fund, you know, it's the year to date, all, all the tax revenues come in for this year, right?
Did we get the check of the state, um, or out from the county for the
For the, uh, what do you call it, settlement check?
Yeah.
I, I believe so. So some of that, you know, it doesn't add up why they're still short. Usually you get made whole from the
Yeah, so similarly in the, you know, line five, the tax revenue, you know, we've budgeted 1.4, but year to date, we've brought in 1.3. The last year's budget, again, 1.4, but the audit was only 1.3. So it's a difference of 100 grand that we've sort of over budgeted down the revenue. If I'm, I'm reading that right, right?
Yeah, you are. And some of the stuff is hitting in different lines now as you move it down to the local community stabilization. Then I didn't, I moved it back up to the property taxes here, cause the state is changing it and putting away, and doing away with the personal property.
But the taxes are the taxes, right?
Yeah, the local stabilization doesn't fall into that line, but still this year to date was 69,000. We're still waiting to see how they're gonna shake that out. So, and then as far as DDA, the personal property loss, that things are going away. This is the form that we're still waiting to see. How are they gonna continue with that? Yeah, cause I usually try to underplay, like when I do my state revenue sharing, you can go to the website and they'll tell you what they reject. I try not to maybe use their NARA, but I'll play a little bit because maybe it doesn't work out the way to see.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's But the personal property tax is kinda the wild card that's moving around with us right now.
But even the real taxes, do we really feel comfortable budgeting a hundred thousand dollars more than we're probably gonna get?
And, and then we're probably, we're gonna, I mean, yeah, both years in a row, it's only been 1.3. So it's 100 grand that
Makes a big difference.
May not show, may not show up, you know, because if we've already, this, this year to date here is, is actual, right?
Yeah, it was 2,428 or something like that.
Because all the, the taxes have come in.
Unless there's been that much of an increase in home purchases or something like a real
That would actually help, help out. Last year, our actual, our increase in tax value was 25%. Even with the heavy rollbacks.
But we didn't get any more money in. We got less money in this year than we got last year.
Yeah, but I know, but our taxable value is going up. So there's reasons why maybe we aren't getting all those. Maybe they're being held up. I don't know. We should have received everything from the county. I don't know why there shouldn't be anything else hanging out there.
I just think they should probably lower that. Because I don't think we're realistically gonna see that money.
But, yeah, I agree with you, but then
So now we got even lost then?
Well, part of the, part of the taxes, they, I'm not sure how, what all tech and he handled is that 1.362. Um, like rubbish DDA out there. We have more coming in from them, but I have much less for miscellaneous. I don't know what they had in making up this miscellaneous here. So if you look at the bottom number, the 2.1 versus 1.99, we're still about to be less than them. Cause I'm not sure how his were broken out. I know how mine broke out, all the various lines, personal, uh, community personnel. And they don't, I don't think they had that local community stabilization fund back then. They didn't, they kicked in the last couple of years.
But even in this year, we're only at 1.34. And you know it's in that number, so.
Yes. It's like constitutional sales tax, the audit two years ago for 17, 18 was 276. And I'm on a 258 because sales tax is a moving, fluctuating thing.
Yeah, it's, that real property tax is the one that's in that line 40, uh, 48. Now it's a million, uh,
It's a hundred thousand more.
It's a hundred thousand more consistently.
And we're about 30 grand down here to date from the budget as well.
Right. And that's, no more's coming in, right?
I don't know. There shouldn't be. There shouldn't be all cut up there. I know we've had new buildings go on this year, new homes that'll be taken into account.
But they were in the little last year. And that did a bump in that car.
Right. And there's a little bit of a lag, you know, it takes some time to catch up.
So ones that were put on last year, 731 last year's pulled the line.
This year. But it's still not gonna be
No, you're not gonna be a hundred grand.
Yeah, we take a hundred grand or even six, you know, 60 grand.
Yeah, I don't like to overdo my revenues, but basically looking at the numbers and playing them out, like it's out that way. I don't know why. I'm more concerned with why if the numbers are down, what, what we're lagging on. Cause typically the county will make you whole with your settlements.
I was gonna say Terry's not at this meeting, so it's completely appropriate to blame everything on her.
Sure, you're clear, Terry.
Exactly. I, I think we just need to get a better handle on those numbers for next week.
Yeah, I agree. Because that changes things. And, you know, if we're over budgeted there a hundred grand and we're taking a hundred grand from fund balance to make this all work, I mean, we're really, that's, that's two.
The wild card is the local community stabilization.
We're up at that number.
The local, the community stabilization fund is the wild card. We're still waiting to see. Um, we turned in the form for last year. Where we got our money. Um, I don't know when that money comes in. I gotta look and see, uh, June last year. June last year's when we put the form in.
And that's not been budgeted.
Right.
So that's, okay. But that still doesn't change the fact that we've over budgeted.
On the real tax?
On the real tax.
Would you, Joe, would you, the local community stabilization fund?
That's the part that's coming into, they're changing away, yeah, they're changing from the personal property to that. As a way to transition community out of personal property.
Have a good day. Take a easy kiss.
Take a donut.
No, thank you.
She got a red bowl. That should be enough.
Okay.
Yeah, we were looking at that cause last week Kelly didn't plan again.
Yeah.
And they're asking, what was the form 15176? So we turned in, I said, if we put it in last year in June, but we haven't paid from the state yet for the local community stabilization fund. So I'm having in here, is they're changing things in states. It's quite probable that we're still getting those local community stabilization funds, cause those are what are replacing the property, personal property if they move things away from it.
Right.
But I don't have anything budgeted for it from not counting yet.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't count on it because then when it hits, it hits, it's surplus, so to speak. So I guess we need to, I wonder if you could go back and maybe even look at a few more years than just this. Um, going back just to make sure we're on track with that, that revenue side of the taxes.
Make the, the sales tax thing too. I'll look and see exactly what the state, I mean, if we were at 276 two years ago, was still here today, but on 247. Now those come every other month. Your, your revenue sharing stuff. So we still had some of that much coming yet.
The, the real property tax seems to be the big one. I mean, I guess my question is, we've looked at this how many times and we're still, I, I know it's a process, but we're still not quite there. Um, and I mean, that's, that's a huge, I think that's a huge oversight, is maybe the wrong word, I don't know.
I'll look at the, the stabilization and the sales tax and the, I'll see the real, personal.
Right. Because that changed us, I mean, if we're
Yeah, I just don't see how we're gonna be that much further below. I mean, the value's only gone up last year and this year. Again, his taxes will Again, his taxes, well, when they had the one point three six two, I don't know what
Yeah.
Broke up, and what created that, or what that audit encompassed.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, our personal here, the, the data is just about on like the forty-four, we're at forty-four, six, ninety-seven. It's the real.
It's the real, yeah.
Well, like on line forty-two, what did we budget fourteen thousand for public relations for? Looks like we spent eleven last year.
Line forty-two is cost center nine sixty. So that's on page nineteen or something like that. That is
No, nineteen sixty-eight.
Twelve. That is what we, we didn't spend any, uh, oh, five thousand budgeted, but half of that goes through the October youth assistance sponsors, so that's twenty-five hundred. Down Christmas decorations, we budgeted thousands, but didn't spend any. And cable commission, sixty-seven hundred, and that, well, we already canceled, we already sent them a check recently, and there's one more to come. And then the newsletter was fifty hundred. So of that fourteen grand, we've only spent year to date forty-three hundred. There's a couple more checks going up with the cable commission, though, for the quarter, the quarterly lease. So, but yeah, the fifteen hundred and twenty-five hundred five thousand of that morning would be spent.
Can any of that budgeted amounts, any future projected expenditures from that be rolled into communications position?
Yeah, well, again, when Joe mentioned a few weeks, there are a few meetings about the newsletter stuff. I have put that in because I'm like, oh, we need to print this, we need to get one out. And now we're thinking, you know, maybe we don't need to do that. And so I haven't done it, so that could be zeroed out.
Okay. So you're like another program that other?
It maybe makes sense that, that communications position lives in this cost center.
Yeah, community promotion, because, well, most of our, so we would give it into a line, a number that belongs more like a rest, like a weight number.
Right, 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 but it could be
Yeah, in that area.
Yeah. So we still got to figure out if we are over budgeted on the revenue.
Yeah.
And we're dipping into fund balance, where we come up with the sixteen thousand to make that.
Right.
And I'm sorry, I'm still trying to squeeze that out, but but I can't really do that until I have the actual numbers, I don't know.
A small amount of it could be charged maybe to, at least for this project, I mean, a small amount, a thousand bucks maybe it'll be charged to the water fund, because part of this project that comes is a water project.
Which budgeted?
They get twenty twenty and twenty four.
Oh.
We have a water project down there, so, yeah, that's all part of the coordination. That's a small amount of it, so it would be a small percentage of that, maybe could be charged to that. But a thousand here.
No, really, yeah.
But yeah, the newsletter part could be zeroed out. Right below that, in the miscellaneous column, that's those final bond payments. There's the forty-five grand went out to the to the twenty twenty, the downtown streets gate. To add to the fifty-five grand, and then the two thirty-three is that final bond payment. Again, so there's a big chunk, that's the final one.
Right.
Those come out, breathing room comes to us.
So there's, there's really four thousand in that public relations cost center.
Unused.
Unused.
Yeah.
Twenty-five hundred for the, you know, community promotions, fifteen hundred for the
Yeah. Newsletter.
Newsletter. But again, if, if that real property tax is not where it should be, then we may need to go through this again.
Yeah, I'm going to go and check on that, because it just doesn't make any sense at all why we would be collecting less than real property tax. Our tax value.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense. We know that the, we, there have been new home builds, there have been home sales.
Appreciation last year, our, yeah.
Then it should not be less than
And that's relatively simple. I don't know how they came up with it, but they did. But if I look at our tax value, times ten point six two mil, that's what you get.
Which is this?
Yes, I mean, well, that's part of it, yes, the real property tax. So I, why we haven't got full money yet, what is still lagging on that?
But, yeah, right, the ten point six two mil, then, yeah.
It, it, that, that's the formula, I mean,
Right.
Taxable value, times mileage.
Maybe, yeah, okay. All right. So I guess
We're at a hundred and twenty-three million is our tax value. That brings up maybe a hundred twenty, not really, one or the other.
So for Tuesday, that needs to be clarified. And maybe, Joe, if you could figure out where to put this marketing position. Which it makes sense to do that in the public relations, but
Yeah.
you know, maybe there's some lines that is over budgeted on that we can shuffle a little bit?
I'm like, yeah, because, like, how do I help? Because I want to be able to help find a way to squeeze that, but I don't unless, unless we went high by line, Joe, I'd be harassing you for like three days straight on
Right.
every dollar in here, so I don't know what to help identify as being an over, like, without dipping into something that I might
Well, if I knew there was one we dropped off ahead, I'd tell you. So, um, that leaves me with having to scan and see. Again, the community promotion form was an obvious one.
I mean, even in like admin that, you know, can roll over on those, it's all just
Well, we definitely have scaled back on our attorney costs. And those costs have come down, and that and look at how that is.
Oh, that was a question to line page five, the DTE energy. The year to date is ninety-five hundred. But we've budgeted
Again, that has to do with those guys piling stuff into one account that should have been that's one of those ones right there. Yep. And I had to change like the sewer and the water for the admin, it's going in all of this one. But you, they used to break it out, sewer cost and water cost, it's all one bill, and she's been putting it all on one line, so I changed it, and I can't budget it out separately. It's going to be budgeted as some sewered water, I mean, it all comes on one bill, we changed it. And most of those are took the cost of the DTE was one that was should have broken out there. And like the treasurer, we budgeted twenty-seven four, year to date twenty-four, and this year I'm budgeting twenty-two. Again, when I budgeted her initially, that was part of the reason we had the excess money there for plan, because we were going to budget for second quarter as well.
The building department clerical, page seven, line two seventy-seven is budgeted for twenty-nine thousand.
Changes to, I'll have to look at the breakdown that, um, see if that's just only gone here to date forty-seven, because she wasn't elevating it out.
Okay. And then similarly, the next line below that,
I'll have to look at that one.
The year to date
Doesn't seem like it should be that high.
Right, the year to date on the next line below that, which is the
The FICA.
FICA, year to date is twenty-five thousand, but budgeted twenty-six.
That shouldn't be that much either. Because those two are definitely
Medical insurance admin seems off.
Part of that, I think, might have been, again, going to, uh,
It looks like the audit is in there twice, perhaps.
Eight oh seven line.
There's an audit for your building department, about eight oh seven, right? There's an audit for the building department, or is that just
I break out the costs. There's a cost of fifteen grand, ten percent here, ten percent there, five percent there. The eight oh seven, you'll see an eight oh seven line in a lot of departments.
The contracted services, BSA.
IT, Plamous.
That seems high. I don't know, well, compared to the year to date, compared to last year, it's
Yep, that was another one of those, like, she's not breaking them out the way I had it. Kim was going here two days a week until October, so when this budget put together, she started doing things by the time I realized she's not breaking them out the way it should be.
I see.
Like, she's charging it all like she used to, because she has lots, she's paying the bills, she's charging it all. A lot of stuff was charged to clerk, flat out, all the BSA, the phone lease, the copier lease, all that stuff you can just charge clerk. The clerk's part was huge. Not to know, all the departments that use that should be charged a portion of it. But there's still three right there that I got to look at on this, that other department. The clerical is a big one.
You guys did just say something about the line two eighty-four, page seven, the thirty-four hundred that's going into the audit, you said?
Yeah.
It's over?
Yeah.
Well, the two twenty-four year to date, I got thirty-four hundred, so that's what I gotta, I gotta look at thirty-four, that seems left, because our audit was only like seventeen grand. Like, that'd be like twenty, well, that'd be twenty percent going to the building department.
Okay.
I'm going to check and verify that, though. Twenty percent building department seems a little high.
So all the eight oh sevens added up, we're on seventeen?
Yeah. Yeah, just using my sewer water. Tiny bit of road this year for the first time. Well, I don't think four. Whenever you see an eight oh seven, not everything gets it charged, I mean, parks and stuff, that's such a small amount, you'd get charged for all of it.
On line three thirty-nine, the equipment rental. Go from
From zero to forty grand?
Yeah.
We've piled it all into one for the DPW, rather than breaking it and went out and down, I thought, rather than actually tracking a very little truck, nine dollars an hour, you're hearing this, that, there. Let's just pick a number that we give in general fund to go and do the equipment round. It's all right there. And then, of course, the road, and the sewer, and the water, the electric as well, so that's like, the total of all funds is a hundred and forty-two grand. But it used to be in other areas, and you'll, you'll see it zeroed up now in the other areas, we just use forty grand as how much we need to go in there for the general fund.
Okay. And the CBA, for the line three oh six, the clerical, it says like twelve, like twelve oh six is budgeted last year. I know they didn't even have me, they had like one meeting, I think, last year or year?
One, two, and then maybe we would
This year, twenty-three hundred budgeted, are we like anticipating?
Part of it is someone's the oversend, like, my, like, three percent of my wages go there, because people come and talk to me about CBA stuff, they talk about various stuff, and I talk to Mary about stuff. I don't really mean, per se. Someone's Terry, that's a percentage of someone's wages. If you, and I think I gave you guys the, at the bottom of the sheet, there's a printout allocation. You can look at every department where everyone's wages are broken down, what percentage is there, and that's derived out. That might be, so the admin is me and Terry, thirteen twenty, and the clerical is, uh, Vicky and Kim, percentage of their wages. And change, I'm going to size some of the cler, some of the percentages this year changed. Like, I know when I sent you the full-blown thing like this, an email that has it at the bottom, very, very, very bottom of that, you'll see the wage breakdown percentages. So for me, I think that might be like three percent me and zero Terry on that one, vice versa, on the, on the admin. The admin ultimately be Terry and I, then the clerical be Vicky and Kim. One of the things we didn't have in there before was like printing publications and postage. Like, when someone comes to a CBA, you have to send out public notices, you have to put an ad paper before they were charged, instead of the clerk's card. Like, well, it's part of the CBA process, so it's part of the, people pay us a fee to go to the CBA, we use those monies to go and do the publications. So now it's actually in there. I put in the amount, covered two of them.
On line three eighty-nine, the rubbish contract. It's one of the one sixteen, but in the years past, it's been about one thirty, one thirty-five. About twenty-five thousand difference.
Yeah, last year, one thirty-three, we did have, well, it's gone up a little bit.
It's gone up a little.
But not much, it, it's gone up a dollar or something. First, that's a thousand a month.
Well, that cost has passed on to the
Yeah.
You know?
It is. Matter of fact, just yesterday, a lady from JF, JF Al called me, and you know, they, they're going to start doing their own in-house recycling, sorting. And so that dollar a month that we're going to charge extra now is not going to happen. She just told me yesterday. I go, well, because everybody put that, it was water, I think the next bill. And she just told me yesterday, they're going to start taking and sorting themselves in-house, they have four, five of them on stage, she said they're going to nobody knows, you have to build a huge one somewhere, Michigan, they call their own, set their own material recycling facility, merch, they call them. So this is just, she called, so that doesn't that's not going to happen.
So maybe look at this one.
So that one, I'll have to, so that will go to roll back down, because that would add another dollar, another thousand a month.
Right, and this line, the three eighty-nine, maybe, you know, that doesn't need to be that high, and that's money that can
And that's money in money out, for one part.
Right.
But still.
Right.
We're about three seventy-nine. Uh, contracted services, we're budgeted for five grand, we spent three last year, but is anything in that contracted?
Can't even remember what all we do there, does that, maybe when we did the repairs and stuff over there?
Yep, that's, like, we had a condo repair.
By the way, you can be handy.
Yeah.
By our place.
Yeah.
This is all DPW from them?
Yes.
Okay.
If something they can't do, like they had to buy an underground cabin, born, verdict street, fix a broken condo and stuff. And that was one of those, that's where that, that's what falls in there. It may be nothing next year, if we're lucky.
Or if light pole gets hit, we have to have electricity come in.
Right.
Yeah.
We'll make sure that don't happen.
Yeah, well, you see, right above that, I have a thousand dollars in case of accidents, because that's what our duct pole is, because we've had
Yeah.
two light poles in the last, the time here.
Last year.
And, and it's all great, yeah, but it's, we have a thousand dollars.
Yeah, good.
So, yeah, I mean, if they just take care of, and yes, the four thousand dollar, five thousand dollar light pole gets covered by insurance stuff, so I, yesterday I had fifteen hundred there, and I looked at that, well, that's the pretty, giving a thousand or two thousand, we have the duct pole.
Just, I, I don't, I don't want to touch DPW from any contracted, I'm trying to see like
You can see right above that, Joe, under the parking lot, I mean, it's line three seven three, and then the one above that, three sixty-two.
Right.
Instead of those having money, a little bit of money here, a little bit of money there, going to the motor fund, motor government.
Oh, I see.
Those aren't there anymore, instead of
Oh, I see.
And I'm glad I didn't put the M back grand for eighty-five grand in our major street fund, I'm glad we didn't get it.
We always budgeted a thousand dollars, and line four oh four for materials, for part, what materials is, we're going to stop there.
Just more of a, well, partly for cushion, I guess, so four oh four.
Well, we're just going to spend some money right now, because we're getting our parks, strip park, fair back out, so we just bought a bunch of cleaning supplies.
Oh, so that's materials cleaning?
Well, the operating, or operating supplies, four oh four is operating.
Oh, I'm looking one line down. Oh, I'm looking one line down. Sorry, sorry, I said four oh, I meant four oh five, sorry. What are materials is?
Year-to-date on that's...
That's gonna, yeah.
Oh, sorry, I didn't look at year-to-date.
But some of that will be...
Well, I just spent six hundred dollars in mulch for the playground equipment, so that's gonna, that's...
I was thinking, mining materials, I don't know what I was thinking.
Yeah, operating supplies are, you know, what we use for cleaning supplies, materials, with make repair or something like that.
Got it, no, sorry, I didn't see it.
And, you know, some of the things you make it off of, it's that part, but then, again, it may be June that he makes those purchases. And, oh, we have five hundred bucks left every, now from June, we spend five hundred, it's done.
I'm getting dust ready, guys.
Oh, no, you're right, you're right to look and overturn. And some of it, you think, oh, collect like in the road, well, we know the surface is snowing, but we're done there. Whatever's left from there is, is equity. But again, that equity, I guess, spent somewhere else. In labor.
Well, I guess in the essence of time, the biggest piece, Joe, I guess, is the clarified...
On the revenue ends, right?
On the revenue in specifically the tax stream there, and the real property tax seems to be the one that's off. By about sixty thousand compared to the year-to-date.
Yeah.
And then, I'll see about wiggle room in terms of that, that communications part-time position. Really, again, that's to fill, I mean, as far as audits are, that position's still there. And we still need to approve it, we still need to go through the process, but it's replacing, you know, Drew, who was, you know, here and was doing some of that work.
On the good note, the revenue from the police department is way up this year for court fees and stuff.
Sit down to you.
Keep talking, we work. What does it add now?
Uh, you know, this is the year-to-date, I mean, so where is that at? That is, which line was that?
Court fees.
Violation fee, where is that?
The billing?
Oh, it's on page two. Take line ninety-one.
I always go to the trial.
Yeah, but it's line ninety-one, it's on three.
The building for...
So the ten grand is kind of...
That's at fifty-five seven through April, so you got two.
Um, I think that's just...
Oh, yeah, because we were gonna talk about that, because if we were fifteen over, it's gonna be...
I mean, if we're looking at doing anything...
Probably twenty-five. Yeah, see, we budgeted forty grand revenue from the violations for, we had fifty-five seven through April.
Right, so it could be more.
But I still only budgeted it, because I don't want to overdo that.
And that's one of those ones you can't count out.
Yeah, so, again, I left it, even though we're already over that through April, I only budgeted fifty-five again next year, because I don't want to make them.
Right.
Have to get that in. Because, you know, personnel change or various reasons, I can plus away, people sort of driving better.
Right.
I did a little bit extra into the workshops for the council this year, from four fifty to a thousand. Now, you guys indicated maybe give some other things to run. Again, a little bit of questions for an extra class or two.
SimCOG, and there's the MML trainings or whatever they're calling it, workshops. Well, I mean, I don't want to further, I think we gotta get a handle on that tax side and figure out where the communications piece can go for our main Tuesday. And that being on Tuesday is just the budget, correct?
Yeah, so something, I was at last night, I came up, and then, maybe we could do that then.
I was gonna possibly try to, well, I still have some work to do, I guess, I was gonna try to propose another stop sign.
Oh, yeah, I saw an email come to us.
Yeah, I've been getting some complaints from people over East Street. And East Street has been a problem for years, and honestly, it's got warrants on there because everybody cuts through there to go to school, and there's a lot of traffic through there, people come. We just had a rollover accident there last week. It wasn't because of speed, she just wasn't paying, she was reaching over for her phone, and she had parked car, and she rolled up the wheel of that car and flipped it right on upside down, so that brought everybody out of the woodwork, people were coming to me, and people cut through here, they go to school, there's a lot of traffic, speed, and it really is, East Street is a major cut through.
Taking over sometime, some of it depends on how backed up twenty-four is.
Yeah, and where I was thinking is, is a good spot for a stop sign to break it up would be between Glassby Street and Mill Street, so right at Division Street. That would be almost a halfway point between Mill and Glassby, so, you know, you're obviously gonna get people are gonna say, well, now they're running a stop sign. Well, at least we're on a stop sign slowing down.
So you're saying that Division and East?
Division and East, yeah.
Mill Street's where the lumber place comes out, right?
Yeah, that's the storage place there.
And they have a stop, there's no stop sign, there's no three-way stop there, it's just the Mill Street stop.
Just the Mill Street stop, yeah.
So you'd only be at, there'd only be one stop sign for the whole length of...
Until you get to where Loux Street is, that's the next stop sign.
That's the what, five-way?
Oh, right, with the whole, the whole house on the...
Yeah, so, so Division Street would almost be, almost a halfway point between Glassby and Loux Street. So you don't have that main stream line, you could not let the stop and then go.
Similarly, I put feedback on the stop sign in Pontiac that was put up.
Yeah.
People like it.
Oh, yeah.
But people also would like to see one in Dennison.
Yeah, I think I heard that. Yeah, I haven't had anybody approach me on it, but I know there was some discussion on possibly moving the one on Park down there and kind of breaking that up a little bit, but the biggest problem we have in this town is everybody is trying to jump off twenty-four, they're scrutinizing through everybody's subdivisions. So everybody's trying to, at least if they're gonna be cutting through, they want at least slowing down, stopping, so...
Right.
I get it, I really do, and if you guys want me to put up one for that as well, I will do that. But I know that East Street is, and it's been like that for years, I don't know why I didn't think about it before. I'm thinking, oh, gosh, of all places, yeah, East Street would want a stop sign there to slow kids and parents and teachers that drive through there on a daily basis, let alone people that cut through there not teaching, not even doing school, they cut through there, yes, I said teachers, yeah. Set an example.
And that's another northbound route for the fire department.
Yeah.
From twenty-four, church, church to fire to east.
East Street is a main road that people jump onto to avoid the light downtown, to get over Glassby Street, just like they do Broadway.
Yeah, looking at...
On the south side.
Probably Dennison up there on the west, on the west side.
Yeah, yeah.
We can probably, I mean, it seems like a pretty easy sell, we could probably squeeze that on, because I know we already bumped so much up that last agenda for next month. The other thing that I was gonna say is, I had an individual from, a student from OBS Elementary School email me, and he's doing his project on access to quality food, and so he emailed me and wanted to know what happened to our farmers market. And I just told, I thought that there was just, this still happened with the space, and there's no space available currently or whatever, so I said, we don't have any, have any longer, but, you know, if you want to come do a quick presentation to council or just, you know, I think he just wants to come and say like, you know, like, hey, I'd really like to have a farmers market again, like, what can we do? So I told him that there was a meeting on Tuesday, because I thought that we had public comment available at every meeting, so, and then I actually told him about the one in June. So I'm just giving you a heads up, we might have a fifth grader come and ask us about farmers market.
I believe Parks and Rec is talking about going some type of a farmers market at their new facility down there eventually, too.
Yes, he did.
Schools was thinking about...
And Amy just told me. Yeah, Amy just told me, this is my guy down here, and with Way House Sports, it's a organic food guy. One of the truck places is talking about having one, he's in his parking lot.
Yeah, and so the farmers market before, it wasn't a village initiative, it wasn't a DDA initiative, it just sort of, somebody was doing it.
They had it over here.
They had it over here at fourteen, fifteen North Washington.
And the guy stood out here with a...
Yeah, and then, when I came on as DDA director, somebody approached me and Joe Young, manager of the type, to move that in conjunction with the concerts in the park. So the farmers market was meeting in the park during concerts, which seemed to work well. And then, I think somebody, you know, cycled off, whoever was kind of leading that, that was their own group, their own entity, doing their own thing, and it just kind of died.
The biggest complaint I heard was there wasn't as much of a variety of fruits and vegetables that there's really sustained, so they said, man, if they could really amp that up a little bit, that might have brought more.
Yeah, I think that's the whole thing, right, it's like, it's like food versus like, if I, because I went once and it was like somebody selling oils and like some weird crap, and I was like, that's cool, because, you know, it's, one thing is like arts, what do they call that, like the arts and crafts, it's kind of more like there. I think this is very strictly like, we're looking at like fruits and vegetables.
We had that when we had Scott's Farm.
We had some.
We just got torn for a while.
They were, they were the ones that would leave it there.
Flowers, some kind of, you know...
The issue with farmers... And I, I put one together when I was working in Indiana. There's no local produce right now, you don't have any local produce.
No, that's down here.
It's August, you know, so, and the thing with this is like...
Growing out of the garden.
All this, maybe Kroger, Meyer, they've all switched over to local, I mean, all of Meyer's tomatoes are grown in Michigan. You know, so it's, you know, you're...
Yeah, it is, we get...
All of that stuff, but the normal market is, is all local now to a certain extent. Five hundred mile radius or whatever. It's a good idea, I think we should have those conversations, and maybe that's something that the DEA looks at. It seems like something that would make sense downtown.
And maybe, and maybe it's as simple as working with the PTO or the school to say like, you know, maybe this school could start a community garden for the kids or whatever, they can't do it.
We did the community garden, we just tore it out.
Oh.
We just tore it out this year.
Yeah.
Like a participator.
Oh, the one over in Scripture? Uh, yeah.
Where the community garden.
Why don't they have it on school grounds? That'd make more sense.
So the thing, the agenda, so I have it wrong, you did it last, you got pushed off the next meeting, not the special meeting, but the next regular.
Yeah, they almost... So this, this will be the only thing on the, the special meeting agenda.
The only thing I was gonna bring back is some feedback from Bob and what he said about maybe the dates.
Oh, okay.
And I'll stay my, I'll stay my...
The next regular?
If I ask solid from him, whatever, I'll try to just...
Okay.
Put that through. Because we'll be putting out the agenda pack tomorrow, so I'm taking Thursday off.
All right.
And Monday is the holiday, or the holiday, so, yeah, it'll be, yeah, just this stuff.
So just budget, anything else to budget before we move on?
I'll try to, I'll try to email it out.
Okay.
Maybe, if you have any basic questions or any better information.
All right.
Yeah, because I heard a little bit about that, rest of the stuff.
Yeah, that's probably the biggest piece.
Yeah.
Okay. How's the funding budget? Are we moving on to public comment, any public comment? Scene none, manager staff report?
Well, just that, I'm off Thursday, Terry's off today, Wednesday.
Okay.
And then, we're getting there, we love the new area.
Almost Memorial Weekend, yeah, we got a parade on Monday, tech line.
Well, I think it's a good one, but yeah, you guys, I'll take that.
Chief, okay. Council comments, Mr. Bailey?
Just, I'll be in Lansing tomorrow for the MML Women's Summit, and then I'll be in Lansing again on Thursday for the memorial ceremony up there. Monday here, I'll be in here in the Oriente for memorials.
Okay, I guess I won't be here no more.
We'll be here, we'll be in town. We'll head up to Memorial.
We'll hold down the fort for you.
Yeah. All right, I have no comments, you will throw the comments, so I'll entertain motion adjourned. Let me rephrase that, I'll make a motion adjourned. There's a motion.
Who's for adjourned?
I made the motion, Kate, say, get her key for street's adjourned. Call us in favor, adjourn at eight twenty-eight AM.
Aye.
Say aye. Aye. And his motion is adjourned, or this meeting is adjourned.